Good morning. We're going to go ahead and get started with the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the Commission, your first item is to conduct your first citizens participation period.
Thank you. This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on items included on today's agenda. There will be a second public comment period after our meeting for anyone who's here on any matter that is not on our agenda today. Those wishing to speak on posted agenda items, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone, provide your comments, and state your name for the record. We'll be limiting comments to three minutes per individual. Is there anyone wishing to provide public comment with regards to an item on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period and turn it back to Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve your agenda. It is in order and ready for your approval.
Entertained a motion?
Let's approve.
There's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. Next item is to receive the CEO report. And first, I'd like to share some good news about funding. We were recently notified that the RTC will receive several grant awards, totaling more than $7.5 million from the U.S. Department of Transportation that will help enhance public safety. Through $5.5 million in community project funding, we will install new pedestrian collision avoidance technology on more than 400 buses and add standalone solar lighting to 500 bus stops throughout the valley. Additionally, $2 million in smart grant funding will supplement a project to test cloud-based signal timing at specific intersections within the city of Las Vegas. This project looks to optimize traffic signal timing to support emergency vehicles and buses, as well as collect data like near misses and red light running through artificial intelligence analysis. I'd also like to note that through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the RTC received increased federal funding directly for regional projects. This year, we conducted a call for projects with local agencies and identified 20 high-priority projects that will be supplemented with $49 million in IIJA funding. I want to thank our federal delegation for continuing to advocate for our public safety efforts. As you know, this funding is critical to deploying initiatives that will better protect some of our most vulnerable road users. While we're on the topic of grant funding, last week, U.S. Department of Transportation Deputy Secretary Paulie Trottenberg conducted a listening session on roadway safety and infrastructure priorities. Our federal delegation members and member agencies, including you and your staff, some of you helped make the event a success. City of Las Vegas Deputy Director, City Traffic Engineer Joey Paskey, who was amazing, she led the group on a tour of Stewart Avenue, which is the recipient of a $23.9 million raise grant that will go toward funding a complete street overhaul of the corridor. I want to thank Joey and the City of Las Vegas for their support of the Deputy Secretary's visit and to Chairman Jones for moderating the listening session. And next, we'd like to recognize Victoria Taylor, an operator from our contractor MV Transportation. And to present this item, we have a video with Deputy CEO Francis Julian.
Thank you, MJ. Today, we're celebrating Victoria Taylor from MV. Victoria was actually at a break, at a layover, and she actually saw a convenience store getting robbed. She immediately went back to her bus and called law enforcement. They came, apprehended the person, and nobody was harmed. So, Victoria, thank you so much for what you did and keep our community safe. Let's go and surprise her. Hi, Victoria.
Hi.
My name is Francis Julian. I'm the Deputy CEO for the RTC. Do you know why I'm here? You just won the Crystal Bus on behalf of MJ Maynard, our CEO, and our Board of Commissioners for when you called the law enforcement when that convenience store was getting robbed. So, thank you so much for what you did, and congratulations.
Woo!
Is Victoria here?
I appreciate it. I feel like this is what I have to do, I guess, daily because this is giving back to the community. And this is something that I do anyways, you know? Dealing with foster children and dealing with the community, you've got to know how to handle situations. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Victoria. Is Victoria here today? I don't know if she's here, but thank you to Victoria for fantastic work keeping our community safe.
And for our next item, Director of Engineering John Pinwels will provide you with an update on the progress of our roadway funding, including fuel tax and sales tax.
Thank you.
Otherwise, thanks, JP.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Chair Jones, members of the Commission. Appreciate it. Let me get the clicker here. All right. Coordinate a couple of things here. All right, very good. So, I'd like to begin our third-quarter roadway funding update by sharing our total roadway projects to date. Since 2014, when the Fuel Revenue Indexing Program began, 629 roadway projects have been started, with 383 of those being completed. These are projects made possible by all local funding sources, including fuel revenue indexing, motor vehicle fuel tax, and sales tax. As of today, we have 126 projects under design, the blue there, and 120 active construction projects on the street, and that's in red. Since 2014, we have awarded more than $2.4 billion in contracts to your agencies. The breakdown of funding includes more than $2.1 billion in fuel taxes and more than $338 million in sales taxes. This graph shows how the dollars under contract compare to our total revenues and expenses. As of the third quarter fiscal year '23, the total revenues and contracts are both more than $2.4 billion, and the total expenses are more than $1.6 billion. The RTC and your Public Works staff are working diligently to deliver projects and invest the money back into the community so we all can enjoy a safe and well-maintained surface transportation Okay. And then finally, the roadway projects funded and developed in partnership with your agencies have created more than 15,000 jobs since 2014. So, the next part of the presentation will be to share a few of the construction projects that have been completed during the third quarter of fiscal year '23. These projects highlight how your agencies, consultants, and contractors are using critical roadway and trail funding to improve mobility, enhance safety, and maintain our valley's surface transportation network. The first project I would like to share with you today are roadway improvements on industrial road from Yucca to Canyon in Boulder City. The improvements include repaving and restriping, adding ADA ramps, and buffered bike lanes, as well as upgrading the streetlights. The total cost for the project was approximately $3.1 million. The next project to highlight are roadway improvements, excuse me, back up, are roadway improvements in Clark County on Silverado Ranch Road from, or Boulevard, excuse me, from Arville to Dean Martin. The improvements included repaving and restriping the roadway and adding sidewalks, raised medians, and again, updating the streetlights. Total cost for this project was approximately $19.3 million. Now to the city of Henderson. In their latest roadway improvements on Sunset Road from Burns to Padco, the improvements here included repaving and restriping, adding sidewalks, bike lanes, and raised medians. Additional improvements included street lighting and updating the traffic control devices. And then finally, I'd like to share, the final project I'd like to share is in the city of Las Vegas on Pinto Lane from Martin Luther King to Shadow. The roadway improvements included repaving and restriping the roadway, widening the sidewalks, adding shade trees, and installing streetlights. Total cost for this project was approximately $3.2 million. And that is the extent of my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, JP. Any questions from the board? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you have a question? I'm sorry, councilman?
No.
I think we're just listening to the report today.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. That concludes your CEO report. The next item on the agenda is to receive Nevada Department of Transportation's report from Director Tracy Larkin-Thomason.
Thank you. Director?
Can you hear me? Great. Well, good morning, everybody. I'm going to share on our safety slide a little bit of good news. The statewide total crashes are down more than 5%, and of those, the statewide total crashes with fatalities, there's a 19% reduction. So, just noting that, it's a favorable trend, and we hope it continues. Yesterday, in the city of Henderson, Congresswoman Susie Lee presented a $5 million check to NDOT to use towards the Henderson interchange project coming up. And so, we are currently in the design build procurement for this one, with the final designs next year before construction starting in 2024. The project is, could be between $300 to $350 million, and $5 million is a good start. I also want to always do shout-out. It's one of those things we want to say in Nevada. Nevada has one of the highest-ranked bridges in the nation, and has for well over a dozen years. We are ranked in the top three with less than 1% deficient. And when I say deficient, it generally means that it's no longer to the current codes. It was built to the codes. There's really nothing wrong with the bridge. It just doesn't meet current standards. But I always like to highlight that because it's something that we're very proud of, and it's a good place to be. The I-15 Tropicana update, we're well into Phase Two of the project, and we're prepping to rebuild the north half of the Tropicana overpass and the new half interchange on the south side of Harmon. There is many lane shifts and a temporary lane closure on I-15. And next month, the crews will also begin to install the first of 10 new automated traffic management signs, or ATMs, that are going up as part of this project. This is basically a continuation of what was put on with NEON. And then I also just want to bring up that we have been monitoring very closely the situation with the driver confusion on the temporary diverging diamond interchange. Just going through, we have closed it down several times and refined the work zone. Each time, it seems to be going a little bit smoother, and we will continue to monitor and keep it going. On the 515 Charleston, the project in East Las Vegas, we are basically just finished a 30-day closure from Charleston to northbound I-15, and we will be getting a 30-day closure of the ramp from southbound I-15 to Charleston starting this morning. And then each ramp in the interchange will get a complete rebuild as part of the project, but it's progressing very nicely. The Summerlin Parkway project continues. It started in late February. It is scheduled to be completed in August, and it does make several improvements to the safety, mobility, landscaping, and aesthetics along the corridor. It includes curb ramp upgrades, replacement of the overhead signs. And I also really want to note that you're going to see a lot of trees coming down. They have, the pine trees have been victims of an invasive park beetle, so we'll be removing all that and the landscaping and replacing it with other trees and other landscaping, less susceptible to these type of infestations. Also want to say that we will be putting in a wrong-way driver alert project. It's coming up. Frankly, the only reason it's not underway right now is procurement issue. It's got a long lead time, but we have four new interchanges down here, I-15, well, you can read them, I-15 Star Avenue and US 95 at Kyle Canyon Road, Sky Canyon Park Road, and Durango Road. We will monitor things, and then as they, and then be looking to enhance and expand the system as we move forward. We have done some pilot ones in northern Nevada. We have noticed there's an 85% success rate with them, so that's a pretty good reason to continue to expand the system. And now for those who were riveted at the Transportation Board meeting on Monday. We have some new lane, HOV lane designations came up for a vote, and we have been working, realizing that we cannot continue to wire the interstate through here. The high-octane or HOV land was created with the intent of moving increasing numbers of residents in there. But as it is, there is a lack of enforcement, and it is being highly violated and on there. So, the vote was put forward of whether to completely remove the HOV lanes or reduce the hours. So, looking through, we did, NDOT did a thorough examination of the past, the things that led up to actually the creation of them, law cases in the back on what we could do and the funding that was used to build the HOV lanes. So, we presented the board with three options. One was to convert the HOV lanes to general-purpose lanes. And per the direction from FHWA and a letter from the US DOT FHWA in DC, this option, we require the department to analyze the environmental effects of the conversion, and the NEPA study will require the department to look at the impacts of the proposed project on the areas of traffic noise impacts, air quality, and environmental justice equality. It also requires public and stakeholder outreach and public comment periods. And the FHWA requirements also include analysis of the possibility of the new traffic configuration degrading the operation of the system. This includes the impacts of the HOV interchanges at Elkhorn, Harmon, and NEON Gateway. So, then this option two was to change existing HOV lanes to express lanes with basically the same mitigation factors as the first one. But I will also tell you, even from NDOT's point of view, having the candlesticks back in is a maintenance nightmare. So, and we don't want to just completely cut it off with like a barrier rail because then you don't have the access in and out for emergencies. The third option is to reduce the hours of the HOV lanes. The board voted to go forward with reducing the hours. So, in the next month, you will see changes in signs, reducing the hours to 6:00 and, to 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on there. And we also, there was a separate motion, was also voted to go forward with option one and to pursue looking at eliminating HOV lanes by doing the reevaluation and the NEPA process. So, those are the two things. Expect to see the signs in there. And please, feel free to drive in the lane between all those other hours. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from the board? Mayor?
Can you do me a hand, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Great. Thanks. Can you give us in the future any reports about the 95-155 downtown, 515 downtown, whether that's an environmental study, what's happening with that continuum of the 95, whether it's going to go underground, or whether it's going to stay elevated?
I will bring that back to you. It's still not fully decided.
Okay, but it is back in.
It's still moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
But I will bring you an update, or send you an update even to your office.
And on the HOV lanes, which I know, having heard our Lieutenant Governor when he was councilman for the past 11 years, every day about the HOV lanes, are those in southern Nevada in totality that these hours are going to be affected, or only in certain?
In totality.
In total? Okay, thank you.
So, the entire system.
Thank you.
Any other comments? With regards to the HOV lanes and the NEPA study, I know Clark County air quality is currently, with regards to our ozone nonattainment, is currently in their process of providing a new plan to the EPA. Does that factor into the air quality aspects of ozone nonattainment?
It does. It will factor into the presence of the HOV lanes and the use of it. From what I've told, what I have seen from the documentation, I don't necessarily see that the hours, per se, affect that. That is, and the hours are generally set by the traffic studies monitoring the traffic within that lane. So, as we move forward, we will continue to monitor. We do have a study that was looking at the traffic within the lanes and the overall patterns during the day. That still continues and going on. We will start the NEPA process in a few months, actually, as soon as we get it together, and expect that to take 18 to 24 months. It then does go back to FHWA. They look at the reevaluation, and they can still say yes or no.
Does that also take a look at, I know one of the things that, as the mayor mentioned, Councilman Anthony had raised, is 18-wheelers, whether there's an opportunity for the 18-wheelers to perhaps have an express lane and get them out of the annoyance of them moving back and forth in front of everything? I mean, is there going to be a look at the 18-wheelers and whether they ought to be in a particular lane?
It was not part of the initial thing, looking at it. One thing about moving them back and forth is unless you plan on keeping them in those lanes, they have different destinations, as opposed to if they're going completely through because I-15 is a heavy freight traffic, heavy freight interstate. And then you have a number of them that will be getting off, you know, truck traffic that gets off at different areas to feed the resort corridor and everything else along the way.
Okay. Yep, Mayor.
Do, sorry, one more thing. Are you continuing the work with Caltrans to try to get the widening of State Line to Barstow?
Yes.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
That project is moving forward.
As you can, report that back to us, because I know
Sure.
we haven't even completed that five-mile path that was supposed to be widened and repurposed. So, thank you.
No, that is moving forward.
Thank you.
And soon.
Thank you very much, Director. We'll move back to our agenda.
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse me, the next item is to approve the consent agenda. It consists of items five through 36 and can be taken in one motion.
All right, take entertained a motion.
What was your post?
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None at all? Okay. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to turn item 37 over to Mark Trozdahl, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, MJ. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. The Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada's tentative budget for fiscal year '24 is due to be filed by April 15, 2023 with the Nevada Department of Taxation. The tentative budget, along with a detailed report of the proposed revenues and expenditures, is due to be filed with Clark County Clerk and will be placed on record at the RTC for review by the public on or before April 15, 2023. The document includes all agency funds. Suggested action by the board is to direct the RTC Department of Finance to submit the tentative budget to the Nevada Department of Taxation by April 15, 2023, as required under Nevada revised statutes. Additionally, NRS requires that a public hearing on the tentative budget be held not sooner than the third Monday in May and not later than the last day in May. At that time, the board will be asked to conduct a public hearing on the tentative budget. So, we'll start the budget presentation by looking at our funding sources. You can see this pie chart shows that we are budgeting almost $954 million of revenue or sources of funding, the largest being sales tax at 33%, followed by fuel taxes of 22%, and then bond proceeds of 19% for road construction, and then grant funding of 17%, and then transit fare revenue of 7%. Our sales and use tax revenue is shown here historically and what we're projecting. In fiscal '22, we had a 25.4% increase in sales tax. That was a $58 million increase from fiscal '21, and that increase has been offset by inflationary increases in labor and supply costs on the expense side. For fiscal '23, we are projecting a 5% increase in sales tax year-to-date through January of '23. We've had an increase of 9.9%, but we're being conservative in our projections due to our economic forecasts. We're also being conservative in fiscal '24 in budgeting a 2% increase in sales tax for the budgeted year '24. Then on the streets and highways side, and the Clark County Department of Environment and Sustainability, this is 1/8 of the sales tax. You can see we're budgeting $77.4 million with $65 million going to streets and highways. The fuel tax revenue, we're budgeting $210 million of fuel tax, which includes our motor vehicle fuel tax and the FRI, both programs of FRI, for that total $200 and almost $11 million. Our transit funding sources, we're budgeting those at $471 million. You can see the sales tax here of $232 million that we're budgeting. That represents 3/8 of a percent of sales tax. And then you can see we're budgeting capital grants, $124.5 million, and then $32 million in operating grants to help fund the operations of transit. And that's a total of $471 million for our transit department. Then you can see our general market and strip corridor fare revenue. You can see here that we're projecting a gradual return to pre-pandemic revenue. We're budgeting $59 million in fiscal '24. Then we'll move over to funding uses, and our total funding uses are also budgeted at $954 million. You can see the capital outlay is over 1/2 of our expenditure budget at $490 million, and then contracted services at $305 million, mostly for the transit department. And then our debt service, we're projecting that to be $102 million, and salaries and benefits at $56.6 million. The capital outlay, you can see at $490 million. $326 million is for roadways for our member jurisdictions, and $160 million for transit capital, mostly being transit buses and equipment. Then this is a historic look at our roadway spending. You can see in '22, we spent $266 million. We're projecting $310 million in '23 and budgeting $326 million in '24. We do plan to issue $300 million in bonds in May and June next month, and then June of this year. And with those bonds issued, we will exceed about $1 billion in outstanding debt after those issuances. The whole idea there is to only issue debt as needed so we can maximize pay-go projects and minimize interest expense. Maryland Parkway BRT is coming up. We are budgeting $95.1 million in fiscal '24 budget, and as has been mentioned, we're looking at a $150 million grant, capital improvement grant from the FTA to fund about half of that project. Our transit funding uses, you can see that contracted services makes up the majority of our expenditures there at $270 million, or 57%. Our total transit funding uses are about $471 million, and you can see, again, the capital outlay at $160 million. Salaries and benefits for transit only are about $26 million. If we look at those capital expenditures for transit, you can see that those are grant-funded by about $124 million out of $160 million of expenditures for fiscal '24. A few highlights of our budget, capital budget for transit. We're looking at preparing for zero-emission buses in the future. We are budgeting $7.8 million for electric charging infrastructure and $3.5 million for hydrogen bus infrastructure. We are budgeting about $87 million in fleet expenditures in '24, and we're also budgeting for facility upgrades and improvements to about $14.5 million. That includes cameras, and then about $4.7 million that we are going to receive in a grant for pedestrian detection, and then about $20 million in technology upgrades. If we look at our fixed route contract cost, we are budgeting $155.6 million in '24, and that increase is due to a new contract, a new fixed route contractor. Will start July 1 of 2023. Here's a graph of our fixed route service hours. You can see those remain quite stable. We're projecting $1.7 million hours in '23 and $1.75 million hours in fiscal '24. Our paratransit contract cost, you can see that we had quite a dip during the pandemic in fiscal '21, and we're gradually coming back up in our expenditures in the paratransit Our transit security, you can see the increases there from 2020 through 2024. We're projecting almost $12 million of expenditures in '23 and about $12.5 million of expenditures in '24. Our fuel budget, you can see, has benefited here through the use of compressed natural gas and a alternative fuel excise tax credit for a net expenditure that we're only budgeting about less than $5 million in '24. And that concludes my prepared remarks for the budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trozdahl. Questions from the committee? Questions from the committee? Seeing none, you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate, Councilman.
Yeah, just to clarify, and of course, you know, it looks what the projected thing that what the members of the public might be kind of like led astray thinking, hey, we see a large, we're anticipating large amounts that are coming in. But of course, we have to be, well, your point is maybe it wasn't made so well, but we're also, you know, with the cost of inflation of everything, that it should balance out, right? Although we have more income coming in, that's going to get balanced out against, you know, of course, anticipated rise in operating costs, fuel costs, buying more machinery and so on. Can you kind of like speak just a little bit more to that?
Oh, absolutely. Those are good points. That sales tax increase looks wonderful on the face, like you said, but then on the other side, the cost of buses has escalated tremendously. Inflation for supplies has escalated also largely, and then also the cost of labor has increased quite a bit. So they do offset each other, so there's not a huge benefit to that increased revenue other than if we didn't have that increased revenue, our budget would be under a lot more strain to cover the increased costs, so it does balance out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, need a motion to direct, direct RTC to, all right, then entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to direct.
All right, we're going to, the motion to direct the RTC Department of Finance to submit the tentative budget to the Nevada Department of Taxation by April fifteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item, thirty-eight, I'm going to turn over to Kresha Harris. She's our Director of Human Resources.
Good morning, members of the Board. This item is to evaluate the performance of the Chief Executive Officer for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Formulate recommendations on management goals and objectives for twenty-three and adjust compensation or take action as deemed appropriate. On February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the RTC Board of Commissioners appointed Chair Justin Jones, Vice Chair Isaac Barone, Mayor Carolyn Goodman as members with Mayor Pro Tim Brian Knutson as an alternate to serve on the Evaluation Committee to review the performance of the CEO. On March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Evaluation Committee met to evaluate the goals and accomplishments of the Chief Executive Officer. Recommendations may be presented at today's board meeting by the committee. Mr. Chairman, this item is now turned over to Ms. Maynard for a brief presentation and over to the Board for action.
Thanks, Dr. Kresha. So, you know, resilient is a word that we continue to hear, particularly in two thousand and twenty-two. When I think about the past year, I certainly want to acknowledge all that we've been able to accomplish. We would not have been able to do that without the staff, our contractors, and our customers. It's clear that we've had to be incredibly resilient, again, from some labor shortages, the cost of supply. It's been, it was a challenging year, and I think the team was very nimble in addressing these significant challenges. I'd also like to thank you, the Board. You continue to inspire us. Your constant leadership, your direction, your vision helps us as we maneuver sometimes very difficult situations in the, in the community, and we are very, very lucky to have you as our Board. And where would we be today without a workforce? And I'll tell you, you know, I may sit here and talk about the, all of the goals, but if not for the team, none of this would be possible. I certainly want to thank the executive team. They are passionate, they are focused, they have a lot of energy, especially someone in particular down there. It is, it's really, it's such a pleasure to work with Francis Julian, David Swallow, Angela Castro, and Mark Trossell. They, they not only lift their teams up, they inspire contractors, they inspire me, and I'm incredibly fortunate. Again, these notable accomplishments today are really in part because of the team at the RTC. They are incredible. They strive for excellence in all that they do, and they really care about their community. And of course, we would not be able to do what we do without our, our contractors. They're amazing employees, all of the drivers, the mechanics, Keels and MB. They certainly make us look good. They are dedicated, and we appreciate all that they do. Our, all of our jurisdictional partners and all of our nonprofit partners. Again, it really takes all of us to, to achieve the annual goals here at the RTC. And so I'm going to briefly just go over, for those of you on the Evaluation Committee, you saw this, but I do want to acknowledge the funny initiatives. We, we take it very seriously to go after every single grant dollar that we can. We, again, last, just in two thousand and twenty-two, received fourteen point five million in grants every year, and this is, it takes an entire year to get a clean audit finding. It isn't just something that happens overnight, and the finance team not only got a clean audit finding on our component, you know, financial statements, they also got a clean finding, no material issues on the single audit and the fuel revenue indexing agreed upon procedures. So they, they, they work at it every day, and it, it really is a big deal. And then certainly last year, we worked with our member agencies. Your staff is incredible. We, you approved a two point four billion dollar capital improvement program. The streets and highways team, they managed over four hundred contracts over the course of last year, and that is, it doesn't sound a lot, but walking down that department, it's, they're busy. We worked with Southwest Gas to extend a renewable natural gas partnership, negotiate and increase a contract that will extend another five years and bring in another eleven million dollars in additional revenue. We worked with our Transportation Resource Advisory Board. We shared our transit baseline with them, talked about the issues in our upcoming transit deficit, and they advised and adopted recommendations for RTC staff to continue looking for revenue solutions, and something we're doing right now in the legislative session. And then our contracts purchasing team, they're small but mighty. They issued a hundred and sixty-one million dollars in contracts to Nevada businesses with particular attention to small business engagement and participation. Through our RISE Committee, we take it very seriously that we try to stand up our, our small local diverse businesses. Last year, you know, safety is, and I know that there's a lot of conversation around it today, safety is a, is a big deal, and it's something we take seriously. Last year, we began negotiations on three pilot programs for advanced intersection analytics to study red light running and near miss trends in Southern Nevada. The FAST team also developed the Emergency Traffic Management Strategies Plan and also prepared the first annual ramp metering report that led Endot and Tracy, thank you to your team, to implement twenty-four seven traffic responsive ramp metering throughout the valley. The Metropolitan Planning Organization that's within our own agency, they conducted an RTC Extreme Heat Vulnerability and Transportation Impact on Health studies with all of your staff. We really wanted to understand who's most at risk for heat and health impacts in our valley. The heat study led to a variety of recommendations, and certainly adding more street trees, more shade is the top of the list, more shade structures at bus shelters where there's not the additional, we don't have the traditional footprint, we're going to look at slimline shelters there. And this, this, as part of this study, we were able to create a forecasting model tool that's going to help all of the planners understand the health benefits of proposed transportation projects. Cycling and pedestrian safety is particularly important to the RTC, especially in light of the rising fatalities from two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-two. So we continue to work with the committee. We, there were more than, many events that the teams sponsored, we have had over twelve hundred committee members participate. We have done walk audits throughout the community to understand where we need to improve safety, whether it's identifying grants for more projects or identifying roadway engineering design improvements. The RTC convened the Southern Nevada Walk Audit Plan Group that meets quarterly and consists of staff from local jurisdictions, the Southern Health District, and the Nevada Department of Transportation. And this study is the effort of implementation from last year's Assembly Bill three forty-three. And then we're working on a really interesting project with UNLV. It's called the Dynamic Rumble Strip Project. It's a testing system that raises rumble strips when a pedestrian is crossing the street, so it brings attention to the drivers in the car. There's more awareness that there is somebody crossing the roadway. It provides a physical and an audible notification to drivers, and so the pilot just concluded, and we'll bring back the results of that pilot to you. We completed a bike and sidewalk inventory project, and we also did that at Biscuit and Boulder City. We used LiDAR to understand the gaps in the bicycle and sidewalk networks, really looking at ADA issues and also under, understanding by using LiDAR, we didn't have to use really intensive infield staff to go out there and take a look at it. The mapping provides a detail of all the bike and pedestrian facilities and where improvements can be made. And then when it comes to transit, we're continuing to improve and increase lighting at our bus stops. Again, we're adding the slimline shelters in areas that don't have the right way for the standard size shelters, and we are going to anticipate installing more than twelve hundred standalone solar lighting at bus stops by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. And then finally, we gathered, or excuse me, we launched an artificial intelligence pilot to gather real-time information on bus stop and onboard conditions by way of our onboard cameras, and we piloted video mirrors on vehicles to improve nighttime visibility at bus stops. The feedback from drivers has been positive on this pilot, and so we're going to look for grant funding to install those on the rest of the vehicles. In addition to regular transit service, we provide transit, we did provide in two thousand and twenty-two, transit to thousands of passengers attending VGK Raiders and UNLV football home games. Again, many thanks to the, the drivers that provide that service. They also provide a service at NHL All-Star Weekend, NFL Draft, and NFL Pro Bowl. We absorbed additional costs from the transit apps where our riders could continue to have full access to this app, that they're able to plan their trip, see where the vehicles are in real time, and also pay for their, their fare. In conjunction with our paratransit contractor, MV, we partnered with rideshare company U Serve as another mobility option for our paratransit customers to improve service and efficiency. The HOPE Grant that we received in two thousand and twenty allowed us to study and develop a plan for microtransit in areas that may be considered transit deserts, or maybe there's, there's a fixed route serves in that area, but it's not close to, for example, a grocery store. And so with additional funding, we'll be able to implement a microtransit service in those areas to help the customers that are living there better get to grocery stores just again for some of the things that we all take for granted. We also completed design on the Go Mid Autonomous Circulator between the Bonneville Transit Center and the downtown Las Vegas Medical District. We expect to begin construction this year. We coordinated on pop-ups at the Bonneville Transit Center, including seven produce pop-ups, so more than twenty-five hundred pounds of fresh produce were, were sold. We partnered with Opportunity Village, Southern Nevada Transit Coalition, Southern Nevada Housing Authority, Clark County Social Services, and the Nevada Homeless Alliance. And then on our freeways, we collaborated with our awesome partner Endot, and we added, as they added a third lane on the I-15, to your point, Mayor, at the Nevada-California So we, we completed actually the agency's first sustainability plan that is helping us to better define, initiate, and advance environmental sustainability through forty-seven near-term action items and performance targets. Some of the biggest projects that we undertook to improve sustainability, including sixty-two new transit vehicles into operation, and preparing to receive our first, which we've done this year, we've received our first hydrogen fuel cell electric buses, and we'll be receiving some battery electric buses. We also continued to develop renewable public transportation and transit infrastructure projects like the Maryland Parkway BRT in Y.A. We just received again, moved by Mark, hundred and fifty million dollars for that project. And then we're, that BRT project will be the first route that will be an all-electric route with fifteen hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. We expanded the bike share system. We added a new station at MLK and Alta Drive and new, new electric bikes. And then when it comes to traffic management, our FAST team selected a consultant to create a modern communication network master plan. They may not sound very sexy, but if you're sitting in a red light and it just doesn't change, chances are that there's a gap in the communication, the, either the fiber optic network is not there, there's something wrong with the loop system. So this is, this is the first step of making the, the traffic signalization optimized. And then we continue to work with the City of Henderson on adaptive traffic, so signal control, particularly around the Dollar Loan Center and on portions of Eastern Avenue. And then finally, am I almost there? Nope. In two thousand and twenty-two, we entered into five inter-local contracts with your member agencies worth more than nine point five million to construct and study multi-use pedestrian bridges and trails. We assessed more than thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred miles of sidewalk in the Las Vegas Valley and four hundred and ninety paratransit clients for path of travel barriers. Then we, we worked with the Regional Event Traffic Management Collaboration, a lot of events, and that takes a village, and it's certainly RTC has convened and, and works very closely with, with all the jurisdictions and with Metro and it, and the resort quarter to ensure that we're moving folks as efficiently as we can with all those events that go on. And then for small and diverse businesses, in two thousand and twenty-two, we awarded three federal contracts totaling twelve point seven million, of which twenty-three point nine percent went to disadvantaged business enterprises, surpassing the agency's eleven point two percent goal. We also hosted two RISE, and that stands for Resources, Involvement, Support, and Education Networking Events, connecting forty-three businesses to nine prime contractors and twelve RTC departments, attended thirty-two community networking events with more than twenty-five hundred attendees, and added five firms to our RISE database. Actually, I have one more, because I want to thank the GAM team. It is, it is, you know, we can't do our job without talking about, talking to our, our community, and so we, we have to be really creative in the way that we reach out to the community. And so in two thousand and twenty-two, the GAM team, Angela and her team, secured three hundred and twenty local and sixty-two national media stories, as well as ten national award recognitions. We gathered more than twenty-five hundred responses from our community on key RTC priorities through seven customer surveys and two hundred and fifty-seven community events and speaking opportunities. We secured fourteen new partnerships, provided incentives and benefits to our customers, and we produced more than twenty-two hundred unique education and awareness pieces for our transit service. As a result of these efforts, we increased our blog subscriber list from twenty thousand to twenty-six, a thirty percent increase. We increased social media followers on the three major platforms by fifteen percent and livestreamed four press conferences on Twitter and increased our marketing email database from a hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and three. So really a great effort by Angela and her team. I want to thank Francis and his team for all of their dedicated work this past year, Dave Swallow, his team, Mark. Again, the team RTC couldn't do without you, so thank you.
That it?
And that concludes my.
Thank you, Ms. Maynard. We really appreciate all that you have done in assembling the amazing team that you have and the fantastic contractors and all the work on the many, many huge contracts that we had over the last year. Mayor Goodman, I got some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm exhausted. I mean, what you have covered in this, but I'm not even sure if it's only you and perhaps Tracy and Endot, well, thanking everybody, but I have a question that maybe I missed it because you did it so quickly. Where are we? I mean, obviously RTC, everybody depends on income. Where is the legislature, the governor, this body, Endot, on finding the income that would balance off Fry Fuel Revenue Index for the electric vehicles? How are they going to be able to participate comprehensively as ownership of electric vehicles and responsibilities for that? Where are we and when will an income source from electric vehicles be part of a comprehensive discussion that can be voted on? And will that only happen at the legislature and with the governor, or is there input from this body and other bodies?
Mayor Goodman, that is, there's a lot of conversation around it. I'm going to actually turn over to Angela Castro. She's been up, she and her team have been in Crescent City every week.
I knew you were signing first.
Good morning. So there's several things that have occurred. As you know, Endot led the advisory working group to study this. I believe right now, actually, I know right now that in the legislature, there's a subcommittee, Tracy has a seat in that subcommittee, where they are talking about what the potential could look like. We're not sure if a road usage fee or vehicle miles traveled solution would happen this legislative session, but there is a lot of conversations about what could be explored, and I'm going to turn it over to Tracy if she wants to add anything. But we do recognize, let me, let me say this, there is a bill right now to continue the indexing of the gas tax, motor vehicle fuel tax, I'll look at Chairman over there, of the indexing of the motor vehicle fuel tax while we work through a longer-term solution because we recognize with more fuel-efficient vehicles and with inflation that our revenue stream, the cost of doing projects is, is, has increased significantly. And so there is a bill, this legislative session, it actually just made it out of committee last night on the Assembly side, and it'll go to a floor vote hopefully in the next couple of weeks. And so there's a short-term solution. Conversations are taking place for the longer term because whatever we decide on what that model will look like will eventually take place of the fuel revenue indexing program. I'm going to hand it over to Tracy now.
To follow up on what Angela was saying is there is AB one eighty-four that does have the working group that's looking at potential options going through. I honestly do not know where it's going to land. Outside of that, I have meetings set up with the head of DMV to start talking about what it would actually take to implement. group that's looking at potential options going through. I honestly do not know where it's going to land. Outside of that, I have meetings set up with the head of DMV to start talking about what it would actually take to implement as we move forward. So we would have an implementation plan, which would take time to get going anyway. So those conversations are beginning. We're setting up in the next month. And then from there, also just looking at, working on, as we increase those, I'm also concerned about looking at the other factors in there. As we get more EVs and as the Biden administration keeps pulling, pushing out some new directives that are increasing, I might say increasing, but accelerating the impact of the EV fleet, also looking at actually how we're going to support it with energy and have the grid to actually have the stations moving around so that once we have them, we'll be able to handle them. So I guess the short answer is, don't know the answer, but we are actively working on things to address it, because just like RTC, that's, you know, it's critical to end up. Without it, we have no funding.
Well, and I have to just really emphasize, everybody thinks the city of Las Vegas, the mayor's office, is a good place to call when there, you know, airline trails in the sky or if the smoke is coming in from California. But we constantly hear from the public about the roads and the upkeep, and it all costs money. So the question is, is we move more and more into electric vehicle licenses and everything else, where that fund's going to come from? And I mean, when I tell you on a regular basis, we hear this road, that road, and we know that down the road, this, we have to find the funds. And so it's not going to be fuel unless something occurs that some new fuel is there for us. So just if you would keep us up to date on what's happening legislatively in this area, because we need to have answers to tell the public. And I know there is no source of additional funding coming in to repair the roads, take care of the lights, all the things that we as residents use.
And I also want to work some more on the education, because exactly the point is, most people don't realize that transportation is so fundamental, it's a fundamental building blocks. I consider it a support economy. If we're doing it well, you never think about it. The minute it goes awry. But we need to connect it to how important it is to, one, economic development, to getting to school, getting to work, and all those things. And that's really not that connection there. Most people, it's like they just get out, there's a sidewalk.
Well, and the public's impatient, and they want answers, and I don't blame them. I don't know how many years we've been playing this game with FRI, but knowing that we need to come up with those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from the board? Councilman?
Yes, I just want to personally thank you and your staff for all the effort you've made to bring me up to speed and educate me on how this works. So thank you very much.
Councilman?
Being new here, I would say the same thing. Thank you for all you guys do. You do a wonderful job, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
Very good. Want to thank the Evaluation Committee for their consideration of Ms. Maynard's performance. I think we can all agree that Ms. Maynard's performance has been stellar. And if there are any other comments from the board, I'd entertain a motion.
I just, I'll make a motion, but again, getting through pandemic, fantastic leadership, not all, not all agencies across our country or even in the state of Nevada did as well as RTC. And that's definitely a major commendation, and with that, I would make a motion to approve.
All right, there is a motion on the floor to accept the Evaluation Committee's recommendations, have a 3% salary increase, and a 3% cost of living adjustment for Ms. Maynard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for your support. I really appreciate it. Thank you. The next item, 39, is, so the regular meeting of the RTC is scheduled for Thursday, May 11th, 2023. Nevada device statute requires that the RTC set a public hearing for the tentative budget no sooner than the third Monday in May and not later than the last day in May. So rather than hold two meetings, it is recommended the RTC reschedule its May meeting to a new date of May 18th, 2023.
All right, I entertain a motion to move the board meeting date from May 11th to May 18th?
Make a motion to move.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 40 is to receive information from our legal counsel. There are no items to discuss. We can move on to your final agenda item, which is to reconduct your final citizens' participation period public comment.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record. You'll be limited to three minutes for your comments, and I would ask, I know there's a lot of people here today, if you could make sure that if a prior speaker has already stated sort of your sentiments, if we not get repetitive, but certainly you have your opportunity here. Ask people to line up if there are multiple people who wish to provide their public comments here today. This is the first four? Okay, I got a request that we have a couple of folks in order. So we have Dennis Hennessy.
Commissioner's staff, Dennis Hennessy, coach operator for Keolius Transportation, soon to be First Transit/TransDev. One thing I just want to mention, it was great to see that budget presentation, really? $12 million for security? Wow. Might want to check that. I'm coming forth today to ask for transparency. Many years ago, Metro was involved in a situation that forced the FBI to come in and do an evaluation of Metro. And now Metro could be one of the most transparent police departments in this country. You have an officer involved shooting, you have a report before they leave the scene, and within three days, the sheriff lays it out. If the officer was guilty or did something wrong, they say it right then and there. What I'm asking for is a monthly agenda item on your council that doesn't get lumped into a sum and just, hey, go. We need a record of how many incidents on a bus that happens in this city. We got to have a start point, because, guys, it's out of control. We got drivers being assaulted on a daily basis, urine thrown on them, spit on, glass barriers busted in the hit. You got passengers murdered. You've had eight, or in eight months, you've had three passenger-on-passenger assaults that either started on a bus and ended right after the bus, or started and ended on a bus where the passengers were killed. Our system is not safe. Mrs. Goodman, you're the last Mohican. I've been coming up here for a lot of years. Larry Brown's gone, nothing effective has been changed. Chris Julie Kehanee's gone, no effective change. Mayor John Lee's gone, no effective change. Lois Tarkanian's gone, no effective change. Our ex-governor used to be on this board, Mr. Sisalak, no change. Are you going to be the last one when you leave to have no change? We need help. We need transparency. The staff's doing some things. We keep hearing, year after year, that there's no way we can have transit police. Well, let's be transparent. Tell the public and tell us what's going on at the legislature. Are we getting transit police next year? Budget doesn't look like it, because it's the same as it is this year. $12 million for guys to take pictures. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Sandra Adams, Vice President, ATU Local 1637, and I also work for MV Transportation. And I got to kind of piggyback on what Dennis just said. When I just saw it said RTC's priority is safety. Safety for who? Safety for what? We come here every month, and everybody up there, they listen to us, they look at us. Nobody has reached out to us. As a matter of fact, I take that back, there's one person on this board that has approached us to help us in any type of way. It just seems like everything is falling on deaf ears. The uptick in driver assault is going higher and higher every day, and nobody is reaching out to us or our community. But you let something happen out there on this strip, they got security everywhere protecting tourists, and we can't even protect our own community? The people that we drive to work or wherever they have to go every day, we get assaulted. So what is it going to take for, my phone would ring it every day. What is it going to take? I don't want to get that call saying one of my drivers have been killed. We need some help now. What does it take? I mean, there's only so much we can do. Who up here is reaching out to us? Who up here thinks about us once we leave here and say, what can we do for those drivers? You know, every time something happens, I get a call to see if I'm okay, if I'm coming home, or if I knew the person just got assaulted. And sometimes we don't even hear about it until we get back, or we get home and our families are telling us, we saw on the news that somebody got killed, somebody got stabbed. What is it going to take for us to get some help here? I mean, we hear you talk about all these millions of dollars on these darn roads and stuff like that. A road is not more important than my life, you know? So these people cannot get back and forth to work. We move this city. Who has our backs? Somebody needs to stand up to the plate and help us out. We're begging you. I'm embarrassed to have to get up here every month and talk about this. Who cares about us? So I'm begging you, please do something to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, RTC Boarding Commissioners. My name is Leo Henderson, a candidate for Nevada State Senate. As your constituent union member, RTC contract employee, please help us provide a safe environment for our employees, traveling public in our great state of Nevada. I would like to state in part of the NRS 2778.260, Security Operation, Employment of Personnel, Establishment of Fines, a commission may provide for maintaining such security in operation as necessary for the protection of the person and property under the jurisdiction under control. We need to draft a legislation bill to mandate RTC to enforce security and protection of our drivers, tourists, and passengers. We need to unite the hands of our metro police officers and revise the custom code of conduct. Please help us return safely home to our families after every shift. Enough is enough. This is my second time up here, but I respect Francis, MJ, Commissioner, Mayor. We need to make a change. Enough is enough. Let's make these drivers come home safely. Let's have these passengers feel safe, because as my constituents, all this stuff happened in my district and also happened in my college district that you'll be coming up to speak soon. But we beg you guys, it's time to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm on East Coast time. My name is Stanley Small, Senior Organizer with ATU International. And I come before you on behalf of these professional operators to tell you, at what cost are y'all going to protect their life? I've seen and I've witnessed bus drivers, bus operators be killed. And I'm reminded every day when I talk to them, are they the next Thomas Dunn? And if you don't know who Thomas Dunn is, he's a gentleman in Tampa, Florida, who drove a bus and a passenger walked right up to him and said, God bless you, and slit his neck. They're not far from that, right? They're not far from that. And I seen the quotes in the paper today, $13 million for security, that is 4%, that's less than 4% of your police budget, right? And it's $13 million, you're paying people with a laundry list of things they can't do. I think it's time to expand on what they can do. I understand somebody gave a report that they surveyed the operators here. I would like, our president would like to see that report on when you said operators feel safe, because we surveyed over 475 of our members and talked to more of them, and they truly feel unsafe. They are truly scared. And I caution y'all on that, because at what point, at some point, if y'all don't do anything, we'll be here telling you, you cost this individual their life. It's time to act. You could do something. Doing nothing is not the answer.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Terry Richards. I'm the president, business agent for ATU Local 1637. Like Sandra, I come up here a lot, and I express how we feel to you guys. We need, we need transit police. We did a rally outside today. It wasn't to go against anybody on this council, it was to make, to gain recognition. You're already our public officials. Get behind us. Help us get that legislature we need. I've been getting calls in the last three weeks of passenger-on-passenger violence, stabbings, shootings. There was a shooting last week on Maryland Parkway I got a call about. A passenger was shot because another passenger was shooting at somebody else. We need to get a handle on this. We don't want, like Mr. Small said, we don't want to be like the other cities who have to have a tally of how many bus drivers got killed this week, this month, this year. We don't want any of our drivers killed. We don't want any of our passengers killed. We need to, every time I get up here, I implore you, please get with us. Let us all get together and solve this problem. We can't get 100%, but at least we can bring the 4% that we are at now up to 60 if we work together. And after 60, eventually, maybe we can find a way to get to 100%. But right now, it's almost like we're doing nothing. I don't even allow my grandchildren to ride the bus anymore. I'm late for work taking them to school because I don't want them on public transportation, and that's my job. Please, get with us. Don't just say, okay, we'll work with you. Actually contact us. Be available when we contact you so that we can get this legislature, because if you're behind us, I don't see any way we can lose. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Janann Logan, and I'm here today helping represent the Union of ATU. I'm a fellow union member of TWU 556, and I'm tired of our government not fulfilling promises. These drivers are tired of RTC listening to lawyers and bureaucrats instead of the people who actually make our city move every single day. I'm a flight attendant, and as a transportation safety professional, I'm blessed to have air marshals and TSA screeners that actually look at passengers before they get on my aircraft. These drivers absolutely deserve something similar. Transportation police willing to stop disruptive behavior and criminals and put them behind Crime is up everywhere. These drivers need prosecutors to actually prosecute and go after violent criminals before they get on their buses. They need them taken off the streets. The transportation safety professionals have had enough. We need your help. We need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Mayor. Afternoon, Commissioners. How you doing? I'm Leo Henderson, Communications Chief for State Senate. Logan, as well.
Sir, there's not a forum for campaigning, so keep to the address.
But we want to let you know, as a former driver, as a representative of the people, we need help for these drivers, because they are abandoned out there. We had a situation last night where they didn't have access to proper security because their system wasn't in place because of an erratic passenger. This is important, because that erratic passenger may have some type of weapon. We need to push state legislatures in our state to impose a shell, a mandatory on this board to get RTC more available security measures. a mandatory on this board to get RTC more available security measures so they can enforce the measures that's on the law books now. Okay? Or we need to revise those boards. We need to work with the Lieutenant Governor, the Governor there, Tracy, all these individuals to do something to make a change for the people because with the Super Bowl coming here, all these events, more people moving here, what is going to happen with the transportation industry? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment this morning? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we are adjourned.